Keep in mind that you need an entire whole card. Do not tear it in half and try to scribble a note on it. We've had that in the past. We want to make sure you keep them whole so that they can be counted. Section one. John, can you lean into the microphone, please?
Twenty-seven.
That's twenty-seven, two-seven. On my right?
Thirteen.
On my right, thirteen. In the center?
Forty-seven. Forty-seven.
Your mic's not on.
Forty-seven. Four-seven.
Forty-seven. On my left?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. We have 112 voters in the hall. We have a quorum to open our town meeting. We do not have a quorum to do money articles, but there are some articles that we will be able to take care of with the quorum that we do have. Madam Clerk, may I have the reading of the warrant, return of the warrant, please? Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth S.S. to either of the constables of the town of Wareham. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the high school auditorium, Seven Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass., on Monday, October 28th, 2013, to act on the following articles. We will waive the reading of the warrant? You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof on or before September 20th, 2013, in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, and by publishing a copy of the warrant by October 3rd, 2013. Hereof, fail not, and make sure due return of this warrant with your doings thereon, to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands this 17th day of September in the year 2013. Thank you. We will now have the posting of the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd now join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Ruiz?
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you to the Wareham Junior ROTC and Mr. Steve Ruiz. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the 2013 Fall Town Meeting. I'd like to introduce you to the people that we have on stage. To my right is Attorney Richard Bowen, Town Council; Town Administrator, Mr. Derek Sullivan; Deputy Moderator, Joseph Ashley; Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Larry McDonald; we have Ms. Bonnie Cuthy, Marilyn Donahue; Mr. David Hurd; Mr. Tom Worthing; Mrs. Joan Fonce; and we have Marilyn Jordan. And at the end of the stage, we have our Selectmen, Mr. Patrick Trupiano, Mrs. Judy Whiteside, Mr. Alan Slaven. Mr. Titlebaum is over getting our extra warrants. For town meeting, there are a few rules that I do need to go over, but before I get to them, I also would like to introduce our new building commissioner, Mr. Robert Iafredi. If you would give a wave out. Our Superintendent of Schools, Kim Shaver-Hood; and our Acting Municipal Maintenance Director, Mr. David Menard. Also at this time, I would ask you if you would all just stand for a moment, and if we could offer just a moment of silence for, out of respect for the passing of the late Chief Howard Anderson, who passed away just a short while ago. Thank you. Chief Anderson had a very prominent presence in the town of Wareham, and he will be missed by many. As in every town meeting, the duties of the moderator and the government of town meeting, not specifically provided for by law, is determined by the rules of practice, which is contained in the 75th edition of Robert's Rules, town meeting time, town meeting tradition, and those rules set forth by the moderator. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, and Article 12 of the October 27, 2003 Town Meeting, and approved by the Attorney General on November 21st, 2003, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, such a vote may be declared as such by the moderator without a count, and be recorded as such by the clerk upon such declaration, provided, however, that if seven members or more wish to doubt, wish to question the vote, or have a doubt, a counted vote shall be taken. The warrant, which was duly posted in every precinct and posted on the town website, is the agenda for town meeting. And town meeting does not come to an end until all of the agenda items on the warrant have been decided, either by approval, by being defeated, or no action deliberately taken. The moderator will ask for a motion on each article, and then the vote and the debate is on the motion that's before you. The motion will be up on the screen. And we're here to debate the merits of the motion, both pro and con, and if we stick to just debating why we should accept what's before us or not accept us, and not stray into other things, we should be able to get through town meeting very quickly. What you see on the screen is the motion before you, and it's not necessarily exactly the same as what you would see in your warrant. Before I continue with the rules I failed to introduce, and I sincerely apologize, Acting Chief Kevin Walsh. I apologize. I'm just so used to seeing you sitting there. You weren't new to me, so I apologize. Following the motion, the moderator will ask the proponent to speak to the motion, and the moderator will ask the Board of Selectmen for a vote of the board, and then for the vote, and will ask the Finance Committee for their vote and recommendation. And at that point, debate will be open. Voters should approach the two microphones on either side of the aisle, and you must be recognized by the moderator before speaking. Please clearly state your name, and please keep your remarks to the specifics of the article. All comments are directed to the town meeting through the moderator, and everyone, I ask that you please have respect for the person speaking. Do not call out. Let them have their say what they have to say, and be respectful that we're all here to give our opinions. The tradition of the Wareham Town Meeting has been to allow the presenter of an article five minutes to speak and two minutes for all others. Therefore, I would ask the body to move that this tradition be continued, with the caveat that the moderator will not come, cut someone off in mid-sentence. It will be an indication that your time is ending, and we would like you to wrap it up, but I will not stop someone right in the middle of their sentence. And as always, if more time is needed, you're welcome to ask the body for additional time, and we will take a vote. And if the body wishes to grant that, then you would have more time. So I would ask for... So moved. Do I have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Amendments can be offered to any article, and to offer an amendment, a voter needs to give the text of the amendment in writing so that we can pass it along to the town clerk for the record. The tellers do have a sheet of paper for you if you need it. And the moderator will recognize the mover of the amendment to speak to the amendment. We will then act on the amendment, and then go back to the article, either as it is amended, or if the amendment does not pass, we will go back to the original article. Reconsideration, the purpose of reconsiderating, reconsideration is to permit a correction of a hastily ill-advised or erroneous action, or to take into account added information or a changed situation that has developed since the taking of the vote. My rules for reconsideration include that it must be moved on the same night that we're taking action on an article. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. It must be seconded. It is debatable, and it will only be permitted if there was a hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or if there is additional information that we were not aware of. Again, non-voters, I ask you to sit down front, so if anyone that is a non-voter, if you're not down here, you need to be sure to come down and sit in the front. Some important reminders: There is no smoking on school property. If you need to go and have a cigarette, you need to leave school property. If you're entering and exiting the hall, please exit and come in to my left. That's to make sure we don't inhibit the integrity of the voting, make sure we have registered voters coming and going. Do not use the right or the back of the hall. And again, if there was an emergency and we do need to evacuate, again, please come in on the door to my left. Please turn off your cellphones and other electronic devices. And as per our town charter, I am required to do a roll call of the department heads, so I will now call for a roll call. We have the Board of Selectmen, we have the Finance Committee, Board of Health, Chief Assessing Officer, Community Development, Conservation, Data Processing, EMS, Inspection Services, Municipal Maintenance, Police Department, Harbor Master, Town Accountant, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, Library Director, Water Pollution Control, School Superintendent. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as we have done in the past, there are sometimes articles that we can group together into a consent agenda that helps speeds the process of town meeting along. In a consent agenda, usually the articles are articles that would generate no controversy and can be properly voted without debate. I am going to read to you several articles, the numbers of several articles, for your consideration to put them into the consent agenda, and every single one of these articles has a motion to pass over them. So the first one that I would like to include in the consent agenda is Article Number Six, which is line painting. And the reason we're passing over that is there is no money in the budget to do that. Article Number Seven. Article Number Seven is the purchase of a vacuum truck for the Sewer Department. The Sewer Department has the money in their budget to purchase that vehicle. There is no reason for town meeting to take any action to raise and appropriate any funds. Article Twelve, and this is a really great, great one to be able to say, there are no unpaid bills. Article Thirteen. Article Thirteen is for a feasibility study, and after a meeting between the School Committee and the town side of government, it has been agreed upon that the school will pay for the study out of their budget. They will seek the 68% reimbursement from, I think it's S.C.A.B.?
MSBA.
MSBA. And then whatever little bit that would remain would be divided both between the town and the school, and they do have funding for that. So again, we don't have to appropriate any money here at town meeting. Article Number Sixteen. Article Number Sixteen has several concerns, and it will be brought back to town meeting after it has been reviewed and revisited. Article Eighteen is the waterways, changes to the bylaws for waterways. The Harbor Master has not heard back from the State Environmental, Department of Environmental Police, and so we don't have the comments from them, so that is going to be passed over and brought back in the spring. Article Number Nineteen was to accept a town street, Cranberry Lane. There was an admirable effort by the residents to get this accomplished, but unfortunately, because of the timeline, it was not filed in time with the town clerk's office, and so therefore we cannot act on it. But everything has been taken care of, so that one can come back in the spring. Article Twenty is the transfer of development rights. After the planning board hearing and the comments brought before the planning board, the planning board has decided that they would like to do some more work on that article and bring it back at another time. Article Twenty-four. I believe that's the tables. Let me just check. And again, the planning board, after going through it, they're not comfortable that that's entirely correct, and they want more time to review it, and that will come back again. And Article Twenty-five is a petitioned article. Article Twenty-five was a zoning change, and by law, was required to have a public hearing before the planning board. There was not a public hearing on that article, and therefore, town meeting cannot act on that. So ladies and gentlemen, we have those articles up on the screen, and I would accept a motion to move that the town vote to pass over Articles Six, Seven, Twelve, Thirteen, Sixteen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five.
Motion so made.
I have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. As you know, we do our articles by lottery, so this might take a bit of just struggling for a minute as they come out to make sure they're not a money article. Madam Clerk?
Article Twenty-three?
Article Twenty-three. Article Twenty-three involves no funding. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to rescind Article Eleven, Signs 1110 through 1115.6 of the zoning bylaws, and replace with revised sign regulation Article Eleven, 1110 through 111, I'm sorry, 1141, as printed in the handout.
May I have a second? I have a second. To speak to the article? And actually, where is Mr. Barrett? Mr. Barrett here? I believe we do have, we had had a public hearing on this article. To speak to the article?
I'll speak to the article in the absence of Mr. Barrett. The signed bylaw was put together over the last two and a half years. The town of Wareham actually had, 1992, a signed bylaw that was put off for further study. Unfortunately, further study was about 21 years. The article has come back. It's updated a lot of the sign issues. The article was brought back because of issues with the ZBA, with the planning board, and with people making complaints in town about enforcement and not being able to enforce with the existing bylaw that's there. So we went ahead and basically rewrote a whole new signed bylaw. It's extremely comprehensive, and it covers almost every aspect of a sign. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted four-one-zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee voted no action on this article, as we had our votes taken prior to the zoning board hearing on this.
Can you speak just into the microphone a little more? It was a little difficult to hear you. It's on. You just have to get up real close.
All right. We voted no action on this article because the hearing was after the day that we took our votes.
Okay. I need to go back just for a minute to Mr. Slaven. Do you have the vote of the planning board?
Planning board voted five-zero-zero.
Thank you. Favorable action?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Trupiano?
Test. Oh, there we go. All right, so I'm the one who voted against this article. I voted against it because the bylaw that we presently have in place has really never been enforced. And if it had been enforced, I think people would have been a lot more happy with what's out there. But my biggest problem with this is that I'm not so sure this is a good time to be putting more burden on our businesses that they can't compete. You know, if I take the sign down at McDonald's, everybody here is going to know that's McDonald's because it's the building, right? The building is a sign. Walmart, same thing. All these businesses are signs. These big companies are all signs by virtue of the shape of their building alone. So all the other little businesses, which are the small mom and pop businesses, those are the ones that will be more affected by this sign bylaw. And one of the things that it seeks to do is have an cumulative total of signs, meaning that the sign out front, a sign in your window, or a sign on the edge of your canopy or whatever is all cumulative into what the sign bylaw is. And, you know, we have a lot of restaurants out there, a lot of independent restaurants. These independent restaurants raise money for the town. They take in some money for us. Matter of fact, last quarter, $128,000. I don't see why we should hurt these folks with more regulation, more stuff. They're already under a big burden right now with the economy and everything else the way it is going. Now, I'm not saying that our bylaw doesn't need some...
Fifteen seconds.
Doesn't need some tweaking, but we really need to think about before we put any more burden on these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right?
Yes, good evening. Mary Scasiotti. I'm in District One. I also sit on the zoning board of appeals, and this has been something that's been ongoing for a number of years. I've been on the board of appeals for about 10 years, a little over that, and we constantly have problems with signs. What we don't want is to end up with the look of Route One in Saugus, or Route Nine in Framingham, or Las Vegas. We want clean, attractive signs that are going to benefit these small businesses, and also benefit and be pleasant so that when you ride down the highways, particularly Cranberry Highway is being assaulted right now with more, bigger, higher, louder, noisier, it's getting very offensive. And the town of Wareham deserves to have a signed law that we can enforce that is very specific and benefits both the zoning board, so we don't have to have as much discussion because the regulations are in place, and the businesses, so that they have a framework to operate under. And I hope that everybody will please help the whole town to have a good structural sign law. Thanks.
Thank you. On my left?
Bill Heaney, Precinct One.
I heard Mr. Heaney, if he leans right into it, I can try it again. I think you have to get up really close.
Is this any better?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Bill Heaney, Precinct One. Madam Moderator, this is not necessarily a question on the article itself, but on the procedure. I've noticed, this is the first of several articles that are indicated in the warrant with a C handout, and we were handed, I don't know how many handouts when we came in, one of which pertains to this particular article. And my question is, maybe through you to the town clerk, are all of these handouts going to be filed with this warrant into, and so they'll be recorded forever?
To answer the question?
She's saying yes, but I'll let her say it herself.
I collect all handouts, and they are in the records permanently.
Okay, so that when we go back in a couple of years, we'll be able to find the handout and this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anything further to be said on Article Twenty-three, seeing no one's... On my right? Yes, please.
Real close? Okay. Don Angussey, Wareham, Jefferson Shores. This proposed change is a little troubling because, out of context, it may not look that bad, but we have the imminent taking of a large portion of Cranberry Highway. When that happens, many of the pre-existing signs, Charlie's Place, Lindsay's, Upper Cape Realty in Cartland, which my family runs, a lot of these businesses that have been here 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 years, are going to lose their signs the way this bylaw is drafted. We're not going to be able to move them back. We're not going to be able to move them back. Another aspect is the wording in, I think it's 1118A, talks about a change of use in the property. I can kind of understand that, not really. Or of the business. What does that mean when a business changes? It means that, hey, someone who's built up a property here and built up a business in town decides to, you know, retire and sell it and move on to the next guy. A person who forms a new LLC or a new something or other, they change it from Charlie's Place to Jack's Place, but doesn't change the size of a sign or anything, that's a change of the business. I think a little bit more needs to go into this. We're not quite in a place where we can go in this direction right now, given the economic climate, and I just don't think this is the right plan.
10 seconds.
I ask all the voters to think about what these businesses have added to the community through the generations. We can't afford to lose anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Slavin, do you rise to speak to the article?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just to answer some of the things we just brought out. The road change on 6 and 20, the project's been cut back substantially, so places like Lindsay's, et cetera, that were mentioned will not be affected because the road, actual piece is not going that far down. The piece about the, if you were to change, say, Charlie's Place to Joe's Place, if it stays a restaurant, no, it's same use, therefore that sign stays. It's only if you physically change the use of the business or physically actually move the whole sign and change it around.
You've already had your time, Mr. Angus. On my right?
Madam Moderator, Cliff Sylvia, Precinct 1. You know, I support this wholeheartedly and I think that this is not anti-business. I think this is pro aesthetics. And we have a beautiful town and this town has been littered for years by these signs. Every place you turn around, you'll see a sign stuck in the dirt, signs stuck on town property. There's been absolutely no control on these signs. So this has been an issue going way back to the 90s and it was voted for the study back then and it really never got done. So I suggest that we put this new by law in place, review it from time to time, and I'm sure probably will have to be tweaked at some point in time. But I've read it over and it makes perfect sense to me and I think it's about time that we let Wareham be as beautiful as it actually is.
Thank you. On my right?
Eddie Percivich, Precinct 1. I also am in favor of this by law and I consider this a by law for the town of Wareham. The Planning Board has been working on this for a long, long time and I think we should go along with what they recommend and vote this in. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 23, seeing no one standing? I will now call for the vote. Because this is a zoning article, it does require a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes by a voice vote of two-thirds majority.
One more, Madam Moderator.
State your point.
I have a question. Since the last form count, we have a lot of people. We have a quorum count, we have a 150, we do all.
Would the tellers please come forward to take a quorum count? Ladies and gentlemen, if you would hold your cards up, please, so that the tellers could take a quorum count.
Section 133.
Section 133. On the right?
21.
On the right, 21. In the center?
60.
The center, 60. On my left?
35.
We have 149 voters in the hall.
Somebody's in the bathroom.
I'm doing it on a calculator.
Madam Moderator, could we ask the audience if they could make some phone calls, see if they get somebody to come in?
Would you like to take a two-minute recess to allow people to? No?
No, we'll keep going.
We can keep going. We'll do another quorum count after we take up our other articles. Do we need to take a count? Ladies and gentlemen, we have had one person enter our hallway for the record. I will now tell you that we now have a quorum of 150 people. Okay, let's get with it. We can, if we stick to this, we should be able to finish this evening. There's no reason why we can't get through all these articles. If we stick to the pros and cons and the merits of the articles, we should be able to do this in one night. Number 1. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer $54,740.55 from the receipts reserved for appropriations insurance recovery over $20,000 account to the school budget.
Do I have a second? Have a second?
Second.
I have a second up here. I'm sorry. Mr. McDonald, when you do your second, if you could say it into the microphone so that people can hear it. I can hear it, but they can't.
I just won't do it.
We can pass you a microphone.
No, no.
Okay. If someone would second into the microphone, that would be real helpful. To speak to the article, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. During winter storm Nemo, the Wareham High School received damage. There's a specific account that insurance funds go into when they're in excess of $20,000. We don't just receive the reimbursement to the different departments. So it's called the receipts reserved for appropriations insurance recovery account over $20,000. This is to bring the funds back to the cost for the Wareham High School and we made sure that those costs or the repairs were done in this fiscal year so that it would be an appropriate action. The insurance carrier sent us a payment of $54,740.55 and that is being brought back to the high school for those repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5, 0, 0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, 7, 0, 0. We voted favorable action because it's actually just a bookkeeping article. It doesn't affect the tax rate and this is the mechanism that we use to get those insurance proceeds into the school department.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 1? Seeing no one standing, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion on Article 11?
I move that the town vote to transfer $25,000 from receipts reserved for appropriation parking at the onset pier to fund the parking kiosk program to be used for related expenses of running the parking kiosk program, with such funds to be distributed by the approval of the town administrator.
I have a second to speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We are seeking to transfer funds out of the receipts reserved for appropriation parking at onset pier. This is part of the new parking kiosk program. When we put in the parking kiosks in July through, we're essentially at the end of October, we have earned $57,524.50 as compared to previous fiscal years of fiscal year 13, $63,000, fiscal 12, $57,000 that were full years. We feel this program has been a success. We are seeking to purchase more kiosks or have the ability to do so in the future. If we waited until the April town meeting to do so, again, we wouldn't have them implemented until mid-year and we'd lose approximately six weeks' worth of funding, which could be tens of thousands of dollars.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen? And if you would, Mr. Clerk, would you please announce the vote for the benefit of the town clerk?
Vote of the Board of Selectmen for favorable action was 5, 0, 0.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and the recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, 7, 0, 0. Even though we know there is still some concerns and kinks to be worked out in this system as well, the parking kiosk seemed to work well. We're generating significant revenue for the town. We're one of the few waterfront communities that didn't charge for parking and for years the Finance Committee had been looking towards that as a source of revenue. We're very grateful that the town administrator is working on this and we support this funding.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 11? On my left?
Irvin Russell, Precinct 6. She mentioned something to the regard of kinks needing to be worked out. There's two specific things that I've been concerned about. I've been under the impression that parking is exempt or fees are exempt from handicap and veterans plated parking. Is that a fact or is that something that?
To answer the question?
Yes, from Mass General Laws. We don't charge for the handicap or for people with veterans plates. They have to actively be their vehicle with the proper placards and such.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 11? On my right?
Just to clarify, that's disabled veteran plates.
Thank you. Is there anything further, seeing no one standing? I will call for vote on Article 11. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Number 9.
May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer $23,955.66 into the unallocated community preservation fund account as follows. $183.80 from Cemetery Mapping approved under Article 23, Fall 2004. $2,227.6 from Westfield Athletic Fields approved under Article 19, Fall 2006. $5,100 from Minot Forest Land Survey approved under Article 27, Fall 2007. $1,750 from Bike Path feasibility study approved under Article 10, Fall 2008. $4,362.80 from American Legion approved under Article 46, Spring 2010. $10,332 from Tremont Nail Roof approved under Article 47, Spring 2010.
Thank you. May I have a second to speak to the article?
Sandy Slavin, Treasurer CPC, to speak to the article. Letter G was removed. It was the 4475 for the O'Hearn property. That project is not completed. The parking lot has not been finished, therefore it was not a finished project and therefore we removed it from the return funds.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, 5, 0, 0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, 7, 0, 0. We voted in favor. It's really a housekeeping article. This action is the mechanism whereby funds that were allocated for a project but not spent get returned to the unallocated community preservation fund so the funds can be made available for future projects.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 9, seeing no one standing? I will now call for the vote. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Mike Flaherty. Should I just read it?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to prohibit remote participation in public meetings by requiring the physical attendance of any member of a public body in order to participate in vote.
Do I have a second? Have a second to speak to the article, Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you. I'm just going to read from something I prepared. This article is very straightforward. It seeks to require that members of a public body actually be physically present to participate in them. This has been how public bodies in Wareham have functioned for decades. This past year, however, the Wareham Board of Selectmen voted to allow members of the town's boards, committees, and commissions to attend meetings using remote technologies such as telephone conference calls or Skype video. It was argued by the BOS at the time that this is common practice in the private sector. Indeed, that is true. Most anyone would agree that discussions in private businesses are just that, proprietary and clearly, quote, "private." However, the exact opposite is true, excuse me. However, the exact opposite is true regarding how deliberations should take place within public bodies on public issues that are in the public's trust. In fact, even though Massachusetts Open Meeting Law now allows towns to adopt the use of remote meetings, the Attorney General's office is clear in that they encourage physical attendance when at all possible in order to uphold the main purpose of open meeting law, that being transparency.
Thank you. May I have the?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize.
It's okay. In this town, citizens in this town put a particular value on transparency when it comes to public meetings. For example, under the traditional way that meetings have been held, they have expressed concerns when they have noticed that members of public bodies might be perhaps preoccupied with their cell phones, screens, or other things where they might, when some claim that some seem to take their cues from somewhere in the audience. The point being that whether real or perceived, under the traditional meeting policy whereby all members have to be physically present, the public can actually see what is going on and they can make their own decisions regarding if something is inappropriate or not. On the other hand, under the new policy, the public will have no idea who is in the same room as members attending remotely via conference call with or without the mute button on. Even when meetings are held by video, all we see is the participant's face and there is no way for the public to know if instant messages are being sent to their screen at the to their screen at the same time. While the vote of the Board of Selectmen was well-intentioned in trying to increase public participation on public boards, according to the Norwood Law Firm, Collins Law Firm, and Pelican, these regulations do not prohibit towns from passing bylaws that restrict or eliminate the use of remote participation by public bodies. Until now, public bodies in Wareham have always been held to the higher standard whereby all members of a public body must be physically present at the same meeting location in order to participate in the meeting. Naturally, this ensures, naturally, this ensures as much transparency as possible. Sorry. I'm starting to breathe. In order to avoid even the appearance of impropriety, Wareham must continue to maintain the highest standard when it comes to transparency. A favorable vote on this article will help ensure the highest standard continues as it always has. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted no action 3-1-1.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted no action 7-0-0. We voted no action on this article because we feel it's flawed as it was presented. We know the proponent has sought legal advice on the matter, but what we're really being asked to look at here isn't a bylaw change. It's not a bylaw. It's a policy. We don't really want to give our opinion at the time and the pros and cons of the, what the article stands for. It deserves more dialogue on the advantages and disadvantages of remote participation, but we don't think that town meeting is the appropriate place to be having that dialogue right now. We voted no action on the article.
Thank you. Mr. Tadoban?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you, I have a question for Town Council. Actually, two questions. First, what is your opinion on the authority of this body having the authority to overturn what the Board of Selectmen have done here when the Massachusetts General Laws and the related Attorney General's regulations that implement those laws make it clear that city councils and boards of selectmen are the only bodies that can adopt a remote attendance policy? And second question is, have you vetted this article or what it seeks to do with anybody at the state level?
To answer, if he so chooses.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, with all due respect to the law firm cited by the petitioner, it's my opinion that remote participation is authorized by Attorney General Regulation 940 CMR 29, and that pursuant to 940 CMR 29.10 subsection 3, only the entity which is authorized to allow remote participation may rescind it. Since that authority is vested in the Board of Selectmen by virtue of the regulation, only the Board of Selectmen has the authority to rescind the regulation, not town meeting. I have taken the opportunity to consult with Assistant Attorney General Amy L. Nabel, Director of the Division of Open Government, Office of Attorney General Martha Coakley, on the subject, and Assistant Attorney General Nabel wrote to me in pertinent part that 940 CMR 29.10 subsection 3 establishes that the revocation of remote participation shall be done by the same person or entity charged with adopting the practice, regards Amy L. Nabel. So in other words, it is the Attorney General's opinion, it's my opinion, that only the Board of Selectmen may revoke remote participation and that town meeting has no authority over this question. Thank you.
Thank you for your response there, Attorney Bowen. Just a few points here. We've just heard from Attorney Bowen that the Attorney General is not going to approve this if we pass it. You know, we've had a history in this town of passing flawed legislation against the advice of council in the past. We send it up to the Attorney General, they shoot it down. I know that we're working hard to try to restore the reputation of the town with state officials, with the Attorney General, with the Department of Revenue, with various entities up on Beacon Hill that are tasked with oversight of municipalities. And I would caution the body about passing this and sending up yet another piece of legislation that we knew wasn't any good and annoying them by forcing them to have to respond to it. The second piece is, you know, I heard some concerns raised about transparency. Since the time I've been on the board, I can tell you that there was a former selectman who used to receive hand signals from a mentor in the back of the room live during meetings. This mentor knew where to sit.
Mr. Tadoban?
Uh, this is...
If we could stick to the merits of the article itself as to whether or not the pros and cons of what we have before us, please.
Well, I think I am. What I'm telling you is that if you're worried about transparency, things can happen right under your nose. You can have somebody...
10 seconds.
Giving ball signals. These people, even when the signals were misunderstood, like in a baseball game, as a player would go to the third base coach, these two would repair to the bathroom. Now, I happen to know that bathroom only has one toilet fixture, so they weren't in there...
Time.
...for its intended use. So, again, transparency, it can happen right under your nose. I urge you to vote this down.
On my left?
George Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. Given Attorney Bowen's opinion, I'll cut this short. This could be a very valuable tool for the land use boards, which have a higher standard to meet when it comes to majorities and conducting public hearings. And I would just hope that the Board of Selectmen could tighten it up to address the concerns of the applicant era applicant, and tighten it up that way, policy-wise, and allow this to go forward.
On my right?
Mary Scasiotti, I'm on the zoning board, and my concern was, in light of the conversation where the Attorney General seems to think that it's an acceptable practice, how does this, if I could get the question answered, how does this impact the Mullen Rule, which if there's a member of a board for some reason... Okay.
That probably signals the end of night school, my, would be my guess.
Um, if I can continue. The Mullen Rule allows for, if a person is late, they are, or misses a meeting, they're allowed to read, participate in the vote by reading the minutes and then getting re-involved. I think that based on the, perfect example is the Walmart here.
Mrs. Scasiotti, if you would keep to the article, please.
Well, the, just was wondering, how does this relate to the boards being allowed to continue to use the Mullen Rule? It seems to conflict, this request, and I would be opposed to it because we need it, the use of the Mullen Rule. And I was wondering if the attorney could please just...
To answer the question?
Madam Moderator, through you, the previous speaker. Since it's my opinion and the Attorney General's opinion that no action that's taken here tonight will have any effect on the Board of Selectmen's acceptance of remote participation, whatever action that's taken here tonight will have no effect on the Mullen Rule.
Okay.
With that caveat, it's not a caveat, that's right out there. In my opinion, there's no conflict between this and the Mullen Rule. I'd be happy to review that with you at a later time.
Thank you very much.
On my left?
Good evening. Steve Holmes from Onset. Madam Moderator, if I didn't know the gentleman who proposed this, I would almost consider it laughable. The reason that this is, was accepted by the town, and I'm speaking in favor against this article, is because we have many senior citizens amongst us, I'm not there yet, although the Red Sox here is growing, that participate in southern winters, December, January, February, March, or in Arizona, or many other vacation spots that they may go to enjoy in their sunset years. The chairman of those committees, just because the Board of Selectmen passed a policy, the policy actually states that the chairman of those boards has the right to allow remote participation or not. If a chairman doesn't like the idea, then that particular board wouldn't have it. But if we have an opportunity, especially for our snowbirds, to call in and participate in their boards, such as the Library, or the Council on Aging, or any of these other boards, they're not doing that to subvert the town of Wareham. They're doing that because they love their town, and they're locked out of attending these meetings now. A quorum must be physically, physically present in the room. So there's no one person in a room and five people in Florida generating a quorum. It doesn't work that way. A quorum has to be present in the room. There's been talk about the Board of Selectmen would use this. I happen to know the chairman well...
10 seconds.
And I don't think you'll ever see that happen at a Board of Selectmen meeting. This rule or policy was not generated for people to sit home and catch the Sox game on TV while there's a meeting going on.
Time.
It's meant to allow our volunteers to have more participation when they're out of town, because there are other towns...
Time, Mr. Holmes.
Yeah. 10 seconds, please.
Time.
You don't want 10 seconds?
Time.
That's okay. That's it? I don't get the 10 seconds?
Time. No. Ladies and gentlemen, because whatever action we take here tonight, we have been advised by council has no bearing on this article. I am going to limit debate on this. We could spend two hours, but whatever we decide here, the Attorney General has already ruled that we don't, it doesn't make any difference how we vote. So I'm going to limit it to just the two speakers. I'm going to ask you to be brief, and then I'm going to call for a vote. On my right?
Bob Russo, Precinct 1. Madam Moderator, I raise a point of order. I believe that this article is out of order. We should not be considering it in light of the statement made by our town council that only the Board of Selectmen are responsible for this. I would ask you to rule whether or not this article is out of order and should not be considered.
Mr. Russo, this was a petitioned article, so therefore, we are required to put it on our warrant, and I will take a vote on it, and it will be up to this body to decide whether to vote in favor for it or to vote against it. We all have heard the attorney give us the opinion of the Attorney General's office. On my left?
Madam Moderator, I move the question.
We don't have anyone after you, so there's not necessary to move the question. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 26. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
The article fails. Article 14. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds to accounts as follows: $80,000 from Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Sale of Real Estate to debt principal; $20,000 from debt principal to planning salary.
I have a second to speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The first part of this actually goes with the Article number three, the triennial revaluation. We are looking to fund the triennial revaluation when speaking with the Department of Revenue, using funds from Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Sale of Real Estate could not be directly appropriated to the revaluation account. It would need to go against something involving real estate. So transferring these funds to the debt principal line for real estate that's already been used, or, excuse me, borrowed for, would give us an $80,000 surplus in the debt principal line, which then in Article 3, I'll ask to transfer to the valuation. So there's a linkage between the two accounts. The $20,000 from debt principal to planning salary is to fund a full-time planner. We've been, we're a large town. We've been using a part-time planner, and a lot of the items that we really think we need to get through haven't been occurring. There was probably a lot more work that could have been done on the TDR, you know, and some items that really would benefit this town. I think it's incumbent upon us to have the staff available to make sure that when there's investments coming into this town, when people are looking to take actions with their properties, that we have the right staff in place and that we don't have, you know, an empty seat two days a week. So that's what this part of it is. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 6-0-0.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 14? Seeing no one standing, I'm going to call for a vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, and Madam Clerk, I am going to go to Article number three because Article number three is directly linked to Article 14. Article 14 transferred $80,000 from Receipts Reserved from the sale of real estate to debt principal, and then this article moves it from debt principal to the reval line item. So they're linked together, so I'd like to take that one up as well, Article three, because they are tied together. So may I have a motion on Article three, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds to the sum of $104,413 for the purpose of funding the 2015 triannual certification reevaluation as follows: $80,000 from debt principal to reevaluation; $24,413 from assessing salary to reevaluation.
Thank you. May I have a second? Have a second. To speak to Article three?
Thank you. This is the linked article, as we've spoken about. The total sum is the $104,413, and the purpose is for the triennial revaluation and certification.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0-0.
Is there anything further to be said on Article three? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 21. Article 21, may I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 222, Flood Plane Overlay District of the Flood Plane Bylaw, map panel number suffixes, and map panel dates as printed in the warrant.
May I have a second? Have a second. To speak to the article?
George Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. I think we've all heard the stories on the flood plane and the different controversies on it. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this on October 21st, where we took a lot of input from disgruntled citizens about what's happening to their flood insurance and where they've been placed in the maps.
Mr. Barrett, what was the vote of the Planning Board?
I was getting to that. 4-0-0 to move it forward to the...
Thank you. Favorable action?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since that time, I guess we've had some other clarifications. I think Selectman Slavin is familiar with that meeting after that, if he would care to enlighten us.
Last Thursday, the Department of DCR came and did a presentation to the town. The FEMA maps as presented, it was an appeal period till, I think it was early August. I'm not going to get into the procedure... I'm not going to get into the procedure and process. I was one of the ones who voted no, just because I didn't like the process and I'm not going to get into the insurance because that has nothing to do with this actual maps. We basically, on February 12th of 2014, the federal government will adopt the maps whether we vote yes or no. The issue is if we don't adopt the maps, which is like putting a gun to our head, we will lose certain FEMA initiatives, certain FEMA reimbursements and a bunch of FEMA programs. The bottom line is, I can't take a chance for the town losing these type of things. I'll read what the gentleman Toby, who is the Director of the DCR from the state, "We'll lose out on emergency services such as blizzards, windstorms, except if the maps are not adopted." There's also a grant program available for cities and towns to assist those who have built, raised homes but now have to raise and then again, raise again. What came out through, our town moderator sent off a note to us, that the bill itself was, and the insurance end was put out by a bill called Bigot Waters. That particular bill was passed and Mrs. Waters had a change in heart after she started to get inundated with complaints everywhere. So she has sponsored a bill. Right now there is eight different bills in Congress either amend or delay this particular bill, as far as the insurance end goes. The letter today came out, FEMA has estimated it will take two years to complete an affordability study, which means they basically have a bipartisan agreement to do a feasibility study for affordability because they now realize that the cost of the insurance increases cannot be borne by most people. I'll continue on, "And reviewed by Congress," meaning the rate increases will be delayed for approximately four years in total. So every, all the basic information about the rates going up, et cetera, are going to be put on hold. If we don't adopt the maps, again, we lose, and the other piece is, a lot of properties that were in either a VZ or VE zone have been moved out with the newest maps. The older ones were much more severe. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
If you recall, a year or so ago, this body approved a set of maps for FEMA under the same circumstances. And those maps were shown to be an error. So if we fail to accept these new maps, I think we have to live with those errors for, for some timeframe anyway. So this affects a lot of people and I would urge you to support this article.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action two two one.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action five two zero. We reluctantly voted in favor of the article because we also understand that there are inconsistencies in the new maps and there's a great deal of concern about the increased costs to homeowners regarding flood insurance. But the consequences of not accepting the updated federal floodplain maps could deny residents and businesses in the town access to flood insurance coverage. It would not be responsible to not vote for this.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 21? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Again, this is a zoning bylaw. It does require a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to rescind zoning bylaws, Article 17, temporary moratorium, medical marijuana treatment centers and replace it with a new zoning bylaw as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second? Have a second. To speak to the article?
Yes, George Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. Again, we held a public hearing on this article on October 21st. Planning Board voted four zero zero to suggest favorable action on this article. If you recall, in the spring, we did pass a moratorium on marijuana treatment centers awaiting the outcome of the Department of Public Health generation of regulations to cover these. They have done so and the only task left was to place it somewhere in a zoning district. What the Planning Board thought best to do would be place it in the institutional zoning district, which is in the area running from Main Street in the Toby Hospital area. I believe it goes all the way through to past the high school, but these schools would be eliminated and around the schools are eliminated by the regulation. So that's what we've done, placed marijuana treatment center in the used chart in the institutional zone.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action five zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted no action, six zero zero, as our vote was taken prior to this hearing.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 22? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Again, this is a zoning bylaw change. It does require a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred and three thousand dollars from the harbor services permits receipts reserve for appropriation account to the harbor master's maintenance and improvements account.
Have a second? To speak to the article?
Good evening. Gary Buckminster, Harbor Master for the town of Wareham. We've proposed this article this evening to cover multiple items if you look in your agendas. One of the portions is to provide some funding towards a purchase of a launch, which is a, everybody's been discussing a water taxi of such. This would be operated off of the Onset Pier. It would provide a service to approximately 700 moorings within the town, the section of Onset. Also two marinas, a yacht club. Basically what we're trying to do is we're running out of dock space in the pier. We have a large transient population coming into town. We've got businesses that have a large draw on the boating public and they come into the pier, they want to come in to visit some of the local shops. We don't have the space to provide to some of these. However, we have multiple businesses that have rental moorings. We have areas of anchorage. We have town rental moorings. This is providing a safe transit for people to come into shore, to come into town and get people into here where they, they really can't get in by the dockage that we currently have. And a lot of people don't, they, they basically turn away or they, they will just anchor and not, they'll stay in the harbor overnight and leave. And we're trying to get people to come in to, to this area. We looked at the funding. This is through monies that's generated by the boaters and it's being reinvested into the waterways. I've spoken with many different agencies that have this. Primarily it's a private agency that, that does run it through the marinas. Town of Marion has yacht clubs, they have different areas. Town of Gloucester actually runs their own launch. The one that's in Oak Bluffs is actually a town-owned marina with a launch that's operated through them. We've looked at the options of putting out an RFP, trying to go, trying to get things in and I just, I'm not seeing that kind of interest from a private entity right now. And I'm using our staff that we currently have seasonally to be able to operate this launch. They, we have a, a person that comes in, they, they train operators of the regulations and they, they, they take a test and they get certified to be able to operate a inspected passenger carrying vessel. So we're just, basically right now, we're trying to, to, to get people into town that don't really have that ability right now and offers a safe alternative for, we have dinghy docks, we have beach, we have dinghies all over the beaches. We don't have a lot of abilities for people to put boats and tenders to get out to there. So this, this is another soft, safe alternative. We don't have people falling over. We had one gentleman go out to his boat, fell overboard. Now he always wears his life jacket, but ultimately it's an amenity to the town. We've looked at some options. It's, it's not a big moneymaker. I think over time this will pay for itself. We will be charging a fee. It's a, a one-way in, one-way out. Usually the ballpark figure is four dollars per person or we can look into a group rate. So if you have a vessel coming in with five or six people as a group rate. And it will also offer a seasonal pass. So a boater that has a moored vessel in this area, they could use it 10 times a day to go out to their boat and under the seasonal pass and they can, it's accessible to them for the pier. It also helps with parking where, right now we have people that come in with their tenders and they park down the boat ramp for days and that does take up trailer parking. This, you know, this will help with some of the, the parking. So it's a, it, it really is trying to get into the infrastr, it's an infrastructure improvement for the town. And it's run through the, the seasonal personnel that we currently have. I'm also looking for covering some of the costs of our dockage and vessel maintenance. We, last year we pulled two of our boats out of a marina and it saved us over seven thousand dollars in dockage fees. However, I do, I am limited and I do still have to pay for dockage for one of the patrol boats unfortunately because we don't have a, a town location that I can safely put a patrol boat. Onset, we've done some modifications to our office and we're able to keep our stuff there now. It also goes with just winterization. If we have gel code issues, unfortunately we all hit things with boats, it gets damaged, we have to repair them, keep them up. And our equipment is in very good condition. Dockage materials, we're looking to finish off our dock project at Bessie Park. This will increase the dockage by 50 feet at the current location. Two docks were destroyed from a hurricane a few years ago and were never replaced while we're replacing them.
Time.
Thank you. Can I have 10 more seconds, if possible?
You've got 10 seconds.
Dockage, safety equipment, and we're also looking for a full-time assistant harbor master and that's going to be funded through the Waterways account. I've spoken with town administrator and we, we feel that we can fund this position. Thank you very much for your extra time.
Thank you, time. The score right now is Boston one in the first inning. Boston is good. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero, favorable action.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action six one zero.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Five? On my left?
Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct One. I, I just have a question on the full-time assistant harbor master position. When, when we're funding that position, are we funding all of the costs? The healthcare position, the, the healthcare costs of the position and the pension costs of the physician, position as well as the salary?
To answer the question?
This is the salary. What, like what we do with our grants is at the end of the year, we would probably for the April town meeting, the special seek the, the, I call it the hit, hit against it to pull the monies out of that account to fund. Because I don't know what the healthcare is going to be until you have the person in there. Also with the pension, it's going to depend, interestingly enough, on the age of the person. If it's somebody that's in their early twenties, they're going to have to pay a nine plus two into the pension and their pension costs to the town are much lower than somebody if they've been in the system for a long time. So what we'd have to do is in the, what this article is right here does not fully fund those benefits. I would have to come back and ask in April and we'd have to do it every year for the funds to hit against there. If we have the person in there, we could probably do it in the fall town meeting once we know what we have and it's going to be, it can change. We could start with a single family person, they could get married, have a kid. So that's why we'd have to do it every year and pull the money out. But I, that's what we'd want to do is fully fund it.
Well, as, as we all know, it's the benefits cost that are killing the town financially. It's the cost of healthcare and it's the cost of pensions. And, and if, if you're going to fund this position or any position for that matter from the harbor services fund, including pensions and, and healthcare, then I can support the article. If you're not going to fund it, including, or, or commit to funding the pensions and healthcare, then I urge that we vote the article down. So are you committing to, to take the funds for, or propose that we take the funds from the harbor services fund for as long as there's a position here?
That would be my proposition.
Is that a proposition or is that a commitment? Because there's a difference.
I'm sure there's a joke somewhere, but yes, that's what we're committed to.
Okay. So, so in the fall, excuse me, in the spring, we can count on funding the benefits for this position?
Yes, and I'd expect a call if the deadline's approaching and the article's not there.
Thank you. If that's the case, I can support the article. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
No, I was just.
On my left?
Hi, the concern, Sharon Gomes, Precinct Three. Concern I have is that that's a seasonal position, so therefore the town will have to pay unemployment for this person during the winter months. And I think the taxi and all that the article says is great, but for the town to pick up benefits and unemployment for a person, hiring a person when the town has issues already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't believe there was a question there.
It was if we were going to fund the unemployment.
Is there a question, Mrs. Gomes?
There, there is no unemployment. It's a full-time position.
Are we that busy on the Waterways?
Yes.
So anything further to be said on Article Five? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20, authorizing the Treasury to establish a separate fund to be known as the Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Fund.
Have a second? Thank you. To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This, the purpose of this article is to establish the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. I can tell you there is no monies to be put into it right now, but the first step is to open the trust and have it available and it is looked favorably upon the town by, by moderators and rating agencies, not moderators, excuse me, auditors.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action five zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action seven zero zero. We're very grateful to the town administrator for bringing this forward. As a previous speaker noted, that this has been an issue that's been of great concern. There's still a tremendous liability out there. We don't have the funds to start putting money aside for it yet, but we recognize it. And that is the first step, that we're going to recognize that, we're going to create a trust. At some point, we might actually be able to contribute and start paying down that liability.
Thank you. On my left?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Margaret Ishihara, Precinct Three. I just had a question on what steps have been taken to establish what monies need to go into the, this particular fund. My understanding is that, under that accounting standard, that an actuarial study and all that needs to be done. I'm just wondering if Wareham has taken steps to do any of that or if there's any plan to do so?
To answer the question?
Yes, we're required to do an actuarial, actuarial study every three years and we do do that. And we, I believe we've received our most recent one, so we can make it available online for everybody to see.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Two? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to fund the following union contracts as shown in the chart below. Dispatchers not to exceed $21,500. Funding from Article 9 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting Collective Bargaining Reserve. Steelworker, lower unit, not to exceed $8,000. Funding source, Article 9, 2012 Annual Town Meeting Collective Bargaining Reserve. Steelworker, upper unit, not to exceed $7,000. Article 9, 2012 Annual Town Meeting Collective Bargaining Reserve.
May I have a second? Ladies and gentlemen, what you're not seeing up on the screen, and I think it's because of the font was too large, it was hard to get it there, the third table is the funding source. And all of these are coming from Article 9 of 2012 Annual Town Meeting. So you're not seeing that table, but all of these funds will come from Article 9 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting. To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, the Article 9 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting set a collective bargaining reserve. It was in the amount of just over $104,000. We are able to use these funds and bring them forward because when you set an article, the article exists until you rescind it. So those funds are available, and that's what we're using to fund these. The first one is the dispatchers. I know during Winter Storm Nemo, we'd been, we were at the police station and we saw one of them in action doing the EMD, or the Emergency Medical Dispatching. And it was pretty powerful to see them talk, speaking to somebody as the woman on the other line was trying to revive her husband. This has been a change in the work that they've had to do in some forms, and that is where some of this compensation is coming, or, or most of it. The steelworkers, both units have received a Step 6 after 10 years. So after you've worked for 10 years, you're eligible for a Step 6, and that is a 3% increase. And the monies being requested are the costs of these. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 6-0-0.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 15? Am I right?
Eddie Busevich, District 1. Just a question. It says dispatchers, and you mentioned dispatchers, Mr. Town Administrator, it says not to exceed $21,500. Does that mean each one of them is getting a $21,500 raise?
No, that's the total, that's the total funds. The total funds, $21,500 for all eight members. That is the total cost of it.
Of, of what? Of the increase?
Of the total increase, the entire department is $21,500.
Okay. Okay. So that's split up between all of the members in that particular department?
Correct.
And that would be the same for the steelworkers, lower unit? That's $8,000, split up amongst all of those people that fall into that unit?
Yes, I would be carried out on their shoulders if they were getting these increases individually.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? If not, I will call for the vote. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, under the category of Historic Preservation, $110,000 for restoration of the Multi-Service Center Roof and three roof air conditioning units.
May I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was actually in a Finance Committee meeting on air, speaking to them, when water started leaking on my head. That was how I discovered about the leak. And what we're seeking is, it is a building that's eligible for these funds. And you'll see, there's also air conditioning units. The reason for that is efficiency. The air conditioning units are just about up from their useful life and would have to be replaced in the next several years. If we're going to replace the roof this year, I can't see us tearing up the roof in the two to three years to replace the, the ceiling air conditioning units. They're the large ones on top. So that's why they're on there as well. So, thank you very much.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0-0. We approve this because we think this is a valuable use of the community preservation money for repairs that desperately need to be made.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 10? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $38,000 from the Waterways account to the Harbor Master's Maintenance and Improvements Account.
The second. To speak to the article?
Good evening again. Thank you for your support previously. This article is the Waterways account. The money is basically the same as the Harbor Service Permit Receipts Reserve for Appropriations account. The funding is the additional funding for the launch. I have a listing for markers and supplies. We have 125 navigational aids that we maintain. We're always looking in areas that, red, greens, caution markers, rocks. We try to identify all these locations to make the harbors a little more user-friendly. This covers chain costs, replacement of markers. They do wear out. Saltwater is not forgiving. It also completes the funding for the Bessie Park and the enhancements to the Tempest Knob Boat Ramp Dock Facilities. We're looking at putting, tying the public, the assisted docks, which if people with limited mobility can use. We're trying to extend that to the end and tie it into our full-face dock system so that we'll allow access to the full pier. It'll also allow us to expand dinghy docks, so boats that are moored off of Tempest Knob will have the ability to put a tender in those locations to be able to access their boats on the Wareham Riverside. Finally, the other purchase would be for the Waterways' Public Access Signs. To use that as an example, Tempest Knob Boat Ramp, we've invested in some good signage, making sure that all of the regulations for the area are clear, reflective, and they're inviting. And I'm just looking to do pretty much the same thing in some of the other public access areas to, to cut down on the old signposts and, and get everything a little more clear for people to understand when they pull in. We have beach sticker regulations and parking regulations and just trying to identify these locations for people. And thank you again for your support.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 6-1-0. Thank you. So anything further to be said on Article 4? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
B8. No, Article 8. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Funds, the sum of $7,500 to create a concept plan for a Nature Explore Outdoor Classroom Play Area at the Wareham Free Library, 59 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass.
May I have a second? Have a second. To speak to the article?
Good evening. My name is Bethany Gay and I live in Precinct 3. And I'm here to present to you this amazing Nature Explore Outdoor Classroom Play Area. It is important to note that this project will have no impact on the library's operating budget or library staffing. The final design will have a plan for maintenance and monitoring that will not include library or municipal maintenance staff. There will be no cost absorbed by the library or the town beyond community preservation funds. The area will incorporate nature as an integral joyful part of daily learning for all ages. This outdoor play area has the potential to impact thousands of children and families in the Wareham area over many years. More and more organizations throughout the nation are going through the process of creating certified Nature Explorer classrooms, including libraries. There's one being, going to be built in New Bedford, and there's an application for one in Fall River. Certified Nature Explorer classrooms can be created anywhere a traditional playground can be built. As you can see by this slide, the space will be divided into clear defined areas such as music and movement, a water area, building, engineering, recycling, digging, and a messy materials area. It can have open areas for dramatic play, a stage, quiet areas for reflections, gathering spaces for literacy, lots of gardens and pathways. Whatever the design, the community will, will make that decision. We all know that, that children today spend significantly less time outside than previous generations of children. Regular time spent learning with nature can alleviate the impact of these serious challenges and support children to grow and learn to their fullest potential. The average child spends 90 times more hours watching TV or computer screen rather than playing outside. We are seeking $7,500 to design a nature-based place, play area for the town property which is adjacent to the Wareham Free Library. The design will include improvements to the area, including the current deck structures, community gardening, and could potentially include security cameras, additional parking, and improvement to the current Aruda Playground as seen here. You can see on this slide the diversity in locations and the types of programs. Each space would be unique. Our design will be based on what the needs, what are the needs of the community. Upon approval of funding, a design will be finalized by early 2014. We think this concept plan will help, will help towns save resources. Safety and security will be improved since there is none in place now. The current Aruda Playground is in deplorable condition. Eventually, the town will have to work on this area. This design will find other ways to fund these improvements. The possibilities are endless. Again, I want to emphasize that this project will not have an impact on the library's operating budget or library staffing. There will be no cost absorbed by the library or by the town beyond community preservation funds. Thank you for your time and please support this great endeavor.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 3-2-0.
May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 6-1-0. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 8? On my left, the score is still 1-0. Red Sox. On my left?
Stanley Andrews, Cranbury Highway. This is a wonderful, wonderful project, except for who's going to maintain this after it is built? Who's going to pay for maintaining it? Who's going to do the security? You know at nighttime, it's a beautiful place for the boys to have a ball in there. And I'm afraid with no security and maintenance that this place is going to get deteriorated very quickly and it would be a waste of money.
On my left?
Urban Russell, Precinct 6. Now, the title of this area will be the Aruda Play Area? Is that, is that correct or?
To answer the question? I believe, Mr. Russell, that Town Meeting passed that back in the early 70s or late 60s. So it would, to change that, would have to come back before Town Meeting.
Well, I would not be at all interested in changing it. I would want to give more emphasis to the fact that Richard Aruda is a veteran and maybe some distinct representation of his service might be included in that, that setup, you know, flagpole or some, some other small monument recognizing his service. That, that would be my position.
Thank you. Just to remind people, what we have before us is, is a feasibility study. We don't have anything before us that involves the building of the playground or anything beyond that. The article before us is strictly to do a feasibility study. Am I right?
Mary Beth Cormier, Precinct 5. I am in a butter to the Aruda Playground. I would love to have this behind the library. My concerns are, I see this every day. I've seen the destruction. The homeless people sleep there. The kids come from school. The equipment at the playground has been totally decimated. It is beyond deplorable. It is very dangerous. I go out there when I can to pick up items. As I said, I think it's a wonderful idea. I would love to see something this beautiful there. But I am also concerned with the maintenance and the security. Since I have moved back to my family home, I've been back 12 years. The lawn around the playground is mowed maybe once a month. The invasive vines have not been clipped back. There are many stories I could tell about what goes on there. So I hope that in the future, that we look at all of this and say, can this remain as beautiful as it looks in the picture? I hope it can, but I'm not positive on that. Thank you.
Am I right?
It's not just a feasibility study, it's also a planned design. That's the first thing I want to say.
Can you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry. Is that better? It's not just a feasibility study, it's a planned design as well. But the money is coming from CPC and that's what it is. Before anything is done, I would suspect that it will have to come back to Town Meeting. When we met with the proponents of this, we discussed the fact that we did not want it to have an impact on the town budget. And we were assured at that time, and I'm sure before it comes back for any type of building, that we would not have an impact down to town. It would be privately funded or through grants. So I understand the concerns about behind the school I've seen back there, or behind the library I've seen back there. But at this point, we're talking about a feasibility study and a planned design, and then we can go to the next step. So I would encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there was a gentleman on my right that...
He pretty much answered everything I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Cliff Sylvia, Precinct 1.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Cliff Sylvia, Precinct 1. I, I think that this is a wonderful opportunity to take an area that is just one, probably a little bit mini step above blight and, and make it beautiful and make it, make it something that our young people can cherish and utilize. And the way I look at it is it's... And the way I look at it is, I know it's designed and feasibility study, and, you know, it's not an exorbitant amount of money. And I guess from where I sit, we've used PCP, Community Preservation Society money. I always get that wrong. We always, we have been known to use this magic fun money in really ridiculous ways. This would be a good way to use it.
Thank you. So anything further to be said on Article 8? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. Last article, Article 17. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to amend all references to 50 years in the present Wareham Demolition Delay Bylaw, Division 8, Article 3, to 75 years and further, to add the demolition delay bylaw language to the beginning of the section titled Historic District Act. Quote, "Any property requesting demolition that lies within Wareham Historical District shall apply to the Wareham Historic District Commission for a determination and certificate of appropriateness. The Wareham Historical Commission, as regards to these properties, has no jurisdiction and does not issue demolition permits for those said properties," end quote.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article? On my left?
Angela Dunham, Wareham Historical Commission Chair. I think that the article just speaks for itself that we've been inundated with demo-delay hearings and not really able to address a lot of the things that the Wareham Historical Commission should be addressing. So we're hoping to move it to 75 years. 50 years is not that far back. And there were some discussions earlier about moving to 100 years. But we did go back and revisit it, and the Wareham Historical Commission voted to keep it at the 75-year change.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 3-1-1.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 5-1-0.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 17? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes...
Madam Moderator, I rise to a point of clarification.
What's your point?
Madam Moderator, in my proposal, or my question to the status of veterans plates, it was a statement made to the effect that it was disabled veterans plates. I'd like to have the council clarify or interpret that article so that we all know specifically if it's designated disabled veterans plates or veterans plates.
Mr. Russell, if you could see council later. He doesn't have that information right now, but we'll be happy to research that for you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have concluded all of the business of the town. I will accept a motion to dissolve this town meeting. I have a motion to dissolve in a second. This meeting, all those in favor? All those opposed? This meeting is dissolved. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your attendance this evening. I know you might have rather been at home watching the baseball game, but so, please enjoy the rest of the evening and the game.
Job well done.